And our journey so far, our status update and what is the, what is iReady about? And our data assessment literacy. For this one, uh, why are we revamping our district assessment systems? Many things changed during the past ten, twenty years. In the past, we have ITBS, student bubble their answers on the bubble sheets. But now with more focus on the communication, critical thinking, standards are different. So what is easily measured versus what is highly valued? And the second thing is that there's a need to capture a rich array of what student know and can do, instead of just memorizing and drilling. So assessments are powerful tools for personalizing teaching and learning. In Tacoma, we are a step ahead of many places in terms of assessment. Late October, this October, uh, US Department of Education is asking the districts and state to audit current assessment system. They say it's too much redundant testing. Please do your own audit in October. And this is exactly what we have been doing since early October and we started the work with a committee of fifty-seven teachers, building and district administrators, working together, come up with a common rule breaks. And so it's our scoring, uh, using our scoring rule breaks to look at, uh, our current assessment and future assessment. Because of the board's leadership and our, the leadership of our superintendent, Tacoma Public Schools, we are leading the way with the revamping work. And we have, uh, come across a lot of good instructional tool that can help our teacher make better instructional decision. So from the research, what we know, research shows that reg- regular, high-quality classroom assessment increased student achievement. So, uh, US Department of Education saying, you know, assessment first need to be meaningful. Second, high quality. Third, need to be part of a coherent system. So this is what we are looking for. Dear teachers, does it assessment, new assessment we are adopting, helping you in your classrooms? So when student engage in assessment, this, this new assessment will help us focus on the teacher saying, I taught it, to students saying, I learned it. And not only that, student can say, I made my progress. I made two years growth in one year's time. I'm celebrating my own learning. So that is the moment we are looking for. So the most important thing for assessment is how teachers and students use assessment information and use the data to improve their own learning. So that's what we have been focusing on.
Good evening, my name is Hannah Benrow. Uh, as Dr. Hung mentioned, we are revamping our assessment system because the existing assessments, as we identified through our, you know, process of auditing, um, what was working, what wasn't working, we learned that they actually aren't aligned to what teachers are expected to teach, some of our existing assessments. So that's one reason why we're bringing this in. And part of that involves what are we gonna do with the data? So teachers have been looking at data around behavior, teachers have been looking about, about, with data around assessment. And one of the really cool things is that this new assessment that we're working on, bringing in that the teachers identified as the right fit for Tacoma, is, um, that we get to build on the skills that they've already been working on around data. So on the screen and on your handout, you'll see a definition of data literacy. That data literacy involves much more than academic data. It involves, um, behavior data as well. It involves school climate data. And then we take all of that data combined and we look at it, uh, in relation to what we know, what we know about our students, what we know about our system, what we know about instruction, and we continue moving forward. So this assessment system really is going to continue empowering our teachers. And it is our goal to build on that data literacy for our teachers and all of our educators in Tacoma.
So real quickly, uh, just on your side, you have some glossary of terms for you to review, um, and just, uh, we can post these online for folks to see as well. For those folks that are watching at home, we're not talking about developing a standardized testing system. We're talking about developing an assessment system. So there will be some things that are, uh, consistent across the district. But as the, the team talks about an assessment system, it's not, we're going to buy more standardized tests and we're, we're really talking about, so, and we'll get into this, different screeners, tools that teachers can use to drive instruction. So I just wanna make sure that we're, for those that are excited at home saying, wait a second, are you gonna adopt a new standardized testing system? No, that's not what we're talking about tonight. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I wanted to, or we wanted to give one example, or a couple examples of how, uh, what data, data literacy looks like in action. What does it actually look like for a classroom teacher? So you have that in front of you as, as well. Um, the purpose of assessment is to inform decisions, is to inform instruction. Classroom assessment helps inform instruction, helps teachers know what the next steps are specific to each student. And then really allows for, uh, uh, results-driven conversation. Data-informed and results-driven, that's, that's what we've been continually working on. And this assessment data will help teachers, um, identify interventions within their classroom and also as a school. What are we doing already to intervene and help students who may not be where, um, where we expect them to be at grade level? Um, that shouldn't all be on the teacher, that's also on our systems. So how can we all work together?
All right, and I appreciate Dr. Garcia jumping in there, so that it is important, sorry, that we distinguish between testing and assessing. And as we've said before, the word assessment means to sit beside, or to sit with a student, or to learn more about a student's story in terms of what they know, what they're able to do, what they need to do next, and then how do we build on it and go from there? And we are very, very proud of the fifty-seven members of this assessment committee who have put in many hours coming to meetings, listening to, learning about assessment first of all, and then listening to various presentations, but all the while thinking about the students that sit in front of them. And what do they really need to inform what to do next? What are the next steps? Because our teachers, that's what they want. They want to be able to do something different tomorrow than they did today to make certain that the student learned it. So when we, we've talked before, this is just a very quick review, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but we think about what type of assessments do we have? And first thing people think about when they think about an assessment is they think about the test, the standardized test, the test that we're giving to students. And, and, and there are lots of different reasons for why we give summative assessments, such as the smarter balance, such as the SAT. Those are summative assessments. Once we've given them, we don't typically do anything with the data in terms of adjusting instruction. We use that data at the district level to help us with our benchmarks, to understand how we're performing and how we're doing. But classroom teachers don't necessarily always use that summative data the next day to turn around and change what they're doing for children, because oftentimes it takes a while for that data to come back. So what we're talking about tonight, and we're talking about the work that we've been doing over the last few months, is to look for a formative assessment. And when we think of formative assessment, there's a couple types. There's a universal screener, and there is a, a diagnostic assessment. So when, I don't know what my challenges tonight we have, but I'm gonna let someone else catch it.
Let Hannah mess it up.
Yeah. When we think about formative assessment, we think about how does the teacher adjust their teaching based on what they've learned? And formative assessment allows us to adjust instantly. And teachers assess, just like we've talked about all day long, whether they watch as Juan walks through the door and he's kinda slumped over and looks like he's had a rough morning, teacher's assessing right away to say, whoa, something's going on. I need to find out what I can do, what's going on. So teachers assess every minute, they're masters at it. Um, we know that formative assess- assessment also helps students. It helps students to take ownership, to understand when they've learned a skill. Oh, I've learned this one, I can check that off. That feels very successful to students. Or, I know I still have these three skills left to learn, but I can do that. And it makes it meaningful and it makes it measurable for students. And we often also know, as I said before, that it can take many, many forms. It's not always a paper pencil. Wanna turn it to the next slide for me?
He's so engaged in listening to you.
So when the-
Are you gonna butter her up?
Yeah, no. When, when I think about a formative assessment, this is kind of a corny analysis, but it works really well oftentimes with families or with, with folks who maybe aren't speaking our language or our lingo. We think about the chef in the kitchen, for those of us who cook, that's not me, but for some of us who cook. Um, you're constantly testing the food or tasting it before the chef serves the soup to his or her patrons. Uh, he or she may have someone test it, oh, that needs a little more of this, a little more of that, a little more of this, and continues to change the soup or change the taste of it until it's just right. And then he or she serves it to their patrons. And then it's summative. Nothing typically happens after unless the patron themselves wants to add salt or pepper. But formative assessment in the classroom is like that chef in the kitchen. There, the types of formative assessments our teachers in Tacoma right now are using, if you walked into their classroom, take many forms, and there's just a variety of those listed on this slide. Everything from just sitting in a, in a Socratic question, a Socratic seminar where the teachers and students are talking about something that they've read, to, you wanna go back one? To, um, observations, teachers sitting beside students and observing them and listening to them, um, to checklists, to one-on-one check-ins, to graphic organizers. So when we talk about that type of assessment that is meaningful and ongoing and happens every day, one of those types of assessments is a universal screener. And that's what we've been looking for, just the right universal screener to meet the needs of our teachers and our students. And when we think about that universal screener, we're thinking about an assessment that gives us a, a fairly quick picture of how a student's doing. So in other words, think about it as a blood pressure monitor, you go to the doctor, you're not feeling well. The first thing usually a doctor does is it takes your blood pressure, finds out something's wrong, doesn't usually stop there, or doesn't necessarily prescribe the exact same prescription for all of us if we have high blood pressure. The doctor chooses to go deeper and learn more. And that's what we call a diagnostic assessment. What we're really excited about, and you're gonna see in just a few short minutes, because we're gonna give you a peek into this tool, is that the teachers and the principals and the district folks who've been on this committee believe that they found a tool that while it's called a universal screener, it goes beyond that a bit. It gives us more than just the basic first glance information. And we're gonna share with you a little bit of what that looks like by walking you through some of the reports and some of the things that teachers will get once they give this assessment to their students. So as we've talked about, this, this universal screener, this assessment, it's not a test, will replace a current assessment that we already give. So we're not adding a new one, we're not, in fact, we may be removing some after we learn more and more about what the screener's potential is, we believe it has grand potential. We may be pulling more of our classroom assessments that we have delivered from the district level off the proverbial plate, if you will. Because the teachers are believing, the teachers who've been serving on this committee and who have seen this tool in action, are feeling like this is going to provide them some really intense information that they've been longing for, that they've been looking for. And it, it's very exciting. So it's not going to add another assessment to our already full assessment calendars, it's going to replace a current assessment that we're using, and that's called the STAR. And the STAR is a universal screener. The STAR that we're currently using was produced in around two thousand two to two thousand four, which was pre the new standards, the new state standards. And while it gives us some, some useful information, it doesn't go deep enough for the teachers, and they feel like it's just not giving enough to be able to change that instruction the next day. So, uh, Feng Yi's gonna talk for you, just a li- with you, just for a couple minutes about the journey that we've been on. We've kinda shared a little bit of that with you. She's gonna take you just through a quick review of where we've been.
So the foundation of all assessment system is built on the teachers and students' buy-in. So right now, our focus is that to have teachers to know more about this assessment. So from October, we have a committee talk, like Marie mentioned, we have committee work on, so what is good for us? What is the value of our current one? What should be replaced? What is a missing puzzle? And what is all missing information we are looking for? So from October, November, and December, with various meetings, we invited vendors to do presentation for us. From the vendors, we do the scoring, we did a scoring, a couple of scoring, and one company keep popping up as our top one choice by our committee. Student committee from eight people or fifty-seven committees, they all chose this one, is iReady. So, okay, we, we, and we had the vendor look at it, and our teacher, we recorded all the sessions. And we realized the, the value of this assessment is really, is beyond assessment, it's about instruction. This is what our teachers love the most. So in the coming months, we are going to do is do the field testing to see if this iReady being adopted by our school board in April, in February, now we are going to field test, see it, how, how does it work for our system? The system integration, do we have any fatal flaws? Can we upload and download a file smoothly? Can you go to the Performance Plus, have the report that we, we are looking for? So this is what we are looking, uh, looking at. We're gonna provide the training for our field testing teachers before the testing, and then after testing, show them how to use the data.
Can I ask a question? What's our sample testing universe gonna be?
Universal, uh, this is our field testing, so it's very, very small sample size.
That's what I was thinking, but how, not, are we, uh, I guess what I'm asking, what, what grade level, what?
K-ten.
K-ten, that's what I thought. And it'll be a small, small sample and-
Small scale, K-ten, because this is our, uh, our aligned-
And I assume you're gonna do it at various schools in the district that are representative of what we're doing and stuff? That's my old statistician stuff comes out.
And a few more at K-two, especially to make sure that we understand the, how it works with our early learners and identify what's most appropriate.
I think this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, our committee, uh, from, uh, suggestion has been, this is great for our third grade and up, but K-two, the reading part, so we want to know more. So how our kindergarten responds to those reading passage or those vocabulary, the fluency part, so they want to know more about iReady for K-two kids, especially in reading. So intentionally, we want to choose more sample in that group of teachers.
And also, we have the luxury to be able to do a little bit more, because kindergarten, first and second grade isn't impacted by state testing. So we want to be very sensitive to the testing calendar, especially at ninth and tenth grade. So it'll be an even smaller sample, most likely, at ninth and tenth grade. But again, our purpose is to field test. It's not to say this doesn't work, we don't want it, we've already made that decision.
Well, I didn't mean that, but make sure we get enough-
Right.
A large enough, but not too large, that if there is a, a common thread through them, we know it. Or, like you say, whether this is a flaw or something we need to fix, or if it's just we need more professional develop, whatever. Yeah.
Yep, uh-huh. Also, we check thorough references for the Nembry School District who have been using iReady for a couple years, like Kent School District and Vancouver School District. So we say, okay, Kent, Raza, Dr., you know, Raza, what is, what has your lesson learned for the past two years? How, how does your testing schedule looking like? And how do your teachers love most? And what is the missing piece? And how about your professional development? So we are learning from other districts as well, after they use iReady assessment for a couple years. So this is about first glance, iReady vendor review. So when our committee of teachers and building and district administrator look at our universal screeners, we ask them, what are you looking for? What is your criteria? So, and then iReady come up as the top. So this is the characteristics, user-friendly, it's pretty, we got a training, our teachers got a training in ten minutes, and they say, really? That's it? I was like, yeah, that's it.
Give them more than ten minutes. But they felt that they could understand it well.
They feel that the language is-
They know what it looks like.
The, the color coder, the four levels, so they, they feel, oh, okay, we got it. And the results are timely, they got the results right away. They don't have to enter the data into Performance Plus or anywhere. So, so, uh, data is reliable, valid, and verified by, not only by the vendors, also by Vancouver, Kent, and other school district assessment department as well. And aligned with our Washington State standards. So different from STAR or other vendors we look at. The, the, their assessment items or their item banks developed ten, twenty years ago. And they keep making the modification and new alignment. And, but iReady started, it's a new company, so they're built from common core. So there are item types, like technology-enhanced items, the drag-and-drop, or pour the water into the bucket and to measure the volume. So those new item types under smarter balance, smarter balance assessment also on the iReady assessment. So we feel like it's a very good alignment with what our, we want our kids to learn.
You really did want me to mess up.
Okay, so why iReady? Another thing we look at is, okay, we like the instructional value, how about so from scientific perspective, from technical quality of any assessment, does it have the valid, reliable data? So we look at our existing STAR. The STAR, so strong correlation, essentially correlation is to get two variables, are they connected or not? Can we use one result to predict or project the result from the other? So a perfect correlation say, okay, Feng Yi, you matched standard on smarter balance, you also matched standard on STAR, so perfect projection. But poor projection means, oh, you do well on this assessment, but we don't know if you're gonna do well on smarter balance. There's no relationship at all. You might do very well, you might struggle the big time. So this is what we are facing for STAR. This is how committee members tell us, Feng Yi, I cannot get much information out of STAR, not instruction part, not projection on smarter balance, level one to level four. What should we do with this STAR? So we say, okay, we hear you. You told us in your survey and focus group, but the new one may not be better, so we verify. And so iReady come up with a high correlation between point eight, point eight-five, point eight-nine, so it's really impressive, one of the highest among all. And so we feel quite comfortable, confident about the results in the, in terms of technical quality of this product.
Okay? So we're gonna go ahead and take a look at the handout with the booklet. And I'm gonna read off the title of the report, because I know that not everybody at home has a booklet. And, uh, so that way, th- this is available on the iReady website. We're gonna turn to, um, the tab that says number one, it's page seven. And we're gonna start and actually see what results look like. So again, um, as Assistant Superintendent Verhar and Dr. Hung mentioned, once the students take the assessment, this data is in the computer. And, um, teachers can easily access it. So on the tab that says page one, and it's actually page, number one.
Number one, page seven.
It's page seven. It gives us a snapshot overview of the class and what the class looks like. Um, one of the things that we learned when we were actually, uh, in going through the RFP process and the vendor had us on the computer manipulating this data, was the little columns over here that are the domains. So this is an example by reading, and so it has the domains of phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words. Each of these domains, you can actually sort the overall data by domain. So even if a student looks like they have an overall high score, we might have some gaps within a specific domain, so we could re-sort our students and really begin to identify where we need to intervene. So that's really cool. And if we look, Jasmine Wells is circled right there. So if we wanted to get more information about Jasmine specifically and, um, see what Jasmine needs, then we go to the tab that says two. And it's as if we clicked on Jasmine's name in the computer. And you'll see across the top-
You have to go backwards.
Yes, you have to go backwards, sorry.
That's why we tapped him, it was not intuitive.
Yes. But the computer was intuitive when we were on it, yeah. Um, so when we click on Jasmine's name, we get an overall snapshot of Jasmine's information. One of the things that you notice is along the top are those domains again. So it looks like we're clicked on the comprehension informational text domain. And on the left-hand side, it's giving us Jasmine's strengths. What can Jasmine do? And the little CC symbol means that if you click on that, you're gonna get the full Common Core State Standard, which is the Washington State Learning Standard that relates to those skills listed of Jasmine's strengths. And then on the right-hand side, it says next steps for instruction. And so, um, teachers can quickly identify. This is also helpful for, um, teachers who are writing IEPs, Individualized Education Plans for students. Um, they could copy and paste some of these strengths in there, um, for their students and some of these next steps as they're working along. Uh, one of the things that our teachers saw when they actually said, what? They, that's how they said it, they were really excited, was as they scrolled down, they saw this Tools for Instruction section. And it has PDFs and their specific lessons. And one of the cool things when we actually like got into the assign- to the lesson, was it's specific enough that a teacher could hand it to a, a paraprofessional who's working one-on-one with a student. And it's also broad enough that a teacher could modify it as needed for a student. So, um, so that's really exciting, that the support, it's right there, they don't even have to go anywhere to get supports.
So real quickly, just to add on that, uh, our community after-school providers, that our teachers can now share tools. And we're not saying to our teachers, you have to do this lesson. We're saying if there is an opportunity and you, you wanna use this, or if you don't have something else, you don't have to start from ground zero. But that PDF function allows us to just shoot that home, even potentially with a, a family member. Uh, it's getting real specific and going from this whole concept of kids passing through the system with holes in their learning, to an opportunity to really, as, as a community, twenty-four, seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year, work and help support the child to fill those holes. No more Swiss cheese education. So, Director Cum.
Through the company, is there an opportunity to get some of these PDFs translated?
So that's a good question. If the, I'm not sure if the PDFs can be translated, but the letters home to parents and different parent support tools are translated into multiple language, but that's certainly something we can ask. That's a great question.
That's good, yeah.
Any other questions before we continue our journey?
Just team, you have about another ten, twelve minutes total, so-
Okay, we're gonna continue then. So, uh, ta- tab three, where it says, tab three. This is a report, it's called Instructional Grouping Report, for anybody looking that up, um, at home. The Instructional Grouping Report actually takes our, the, the class of students and says, this group of students is working on a specific skill. So on the right-hand side, we can see our Profile One students are working with, on limited vocabulary skills, our Profile Two students on larger vocabulary skills. So let's say that we wanted to click on our Profile Three students to get some ideas of, of how we can better support that group of four students. So we turn to the next page, tab four. And it's as if we clicked on Profile Three. Again, we have the breakdown of what these students as a group are working on, and we have PDF lessons as a great jumping off point, um, for where we can go with this group of students. And we get that for each of our, our groups of students. So it really supports, um, skill-based grouping and instruction specific to what the students need. Uh, and this is the reading example, if you go further through on your own, there's the math examples too. So this is specific to reading, but there's math as well. If you turn to tab six, this is called the Common Core State Standards Report. And so this is, again, just from that universal screener snapshot. It's filling out what, what competencies, what standards have students already identified that they know. And then tab five is the next page, our growth monitoring. As we identify students' growth, uh, you know, throughout one year or throughout multiple years, this, this report's only shown over one year, but we did ask during the RFP process if we could get this, like longitudinally, to show multiple years, so that at elementary school, we could look at sixth-grade readiness or whatever, we want kids up to be up to those levels. Then we can see projected growth based on the trajectory that the student is achieving at the moment, and then hopefully see that change over time as we intervene with instruction. So we tabbed a couple more, um, reports in here, if you wanna look through at your own convenience. Um, and that was primarily in the reading section, but there also is a math section because this assessment is for reading and math.
Questions to the board?
So we just have one quick wrap-up, and then we'll turn it over to you. You're okay? We just wanted to, again, reiterate, going back to what Dr. Garcia said at the beginning.
Marie, can you use the mic, please?
Not used to being on a microphone, sorry. So our goal was to really identify an assessment tool, an assessment system that promotes learning, that's an essential part of the learning process, that helps teachers to adjust and monitor students' progress, to enable teachers and students to set goals, learning goals, and to give our families valuable and reliable information about their students' academic achievement. So we hope that we provided you with a quick insight as to what we've been doing over the last few months, and we'd love to hear your questions.
Director Hung, just start with you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'm very excited to see how this tool performs. I appreciate the due diligence that's gone in to get it to this point, and, uh, I think that if it, if it's as effective as we think it's gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna be transformational for kids and- it's going to, it's going to be transformational for kids and families. Just one question on tab five, page 12, on the projected growth. As you did your research and you talked with the neighboring districts, how accurate is the projected growth?
They, the neighboring school district, our assessment say, Feng Yi, that their norm is, is new company. So if you compare to other existing company, their norm is, their sample size is not as huge as a lot of millions of records. But their sample size is pretty huge. It's about 20,000 students in terms of the norms they built. So the growth norm is pretty predictable and reliable. But they are also enhancing and building it. Now, another one, another thing is that smaller balance is new too. So last year, so it's their first time to look at projections. So how well I already can predict smaller balance. So it's the first time they have data. And so we are going to duplicate the process, see how reliable is this projection process.
And to follow up on what Dr. Hung said, it would be about 88% accurate.
Thank you. Director Cobb?
My question's about whether or not all the teachers working with a student have access to this information. So for this, thinking about the normal classroom teacher as opposed to maybe a teacher who's working with a student and providing additional lab services. Or does everyone who comes in contact with the student have access to this?
That is our intent, yes. It is to have these reports readily available, to have this data readily available. We have Sandra sitting in the back, who's our Director of Title. And she's been very much a part of this process. And Dr. Lindsay Brown has been very much a part of the process, as well as Jennifer Trafler, as well as Dr. Hodge. All with the same intent, that this information, and we've been very specific with the company about, talk to us about ELL. In fact, we do have some reports that we brought about ELL and special education and Title One students. And we'll leave those if you'd like to look at one, because that has been a very big focus for us as too, for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to.
We're excited.
Director Wens, Director Cobb, do you have any other?
Yeah, so that was a great question. Yeah, that's a good answer also. And my only question would be, how much time do you think this test would be used during the year? Like per grade level? I know every grade level will be a little different. Let's just take like second grade.
Different grade level for the kindergarten and first grade, usually about 20 to 30 minutes per subject area. And then for the.
But how oft, how often?
How often? Our teachers and also the, from different school district, is three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. So fall essentially give you the baseline, give teacher the baseline, where these kids are, where are the gaps. And the mid-year, and they will continue to do progress monitoring every month. Then in the winter, they say, okay, are we making a good growth? Then the spring is end of year summative. And also the feedback and to identify if kids need extra support in the following summer.
Summer.
Yeah.
I think from a teacher point of view, I think, you know, Director Wenskill's always brought, has brought up some salient points about the time. But one of the major things I think is different about the system is that you don't have to enter data. You know, you don't have to get your results and then, you know, then enter it in. And that's amazing. And then also is that, you know, we've made that, we've made that differentiation between assessments that give you immediate information about what your next teaching is. And so I think that teachers will really appreciate that formative assessment that gives them immediate information. They don't have to wait for central office four weeks down the road to say, hey, here's how you did. But instead, they get immediate information. They don't have to put that data in somewhere else. And they can automatically turn around and increase the teacher. So I think that's going to make a major difference.
We certainly hope so. And we also have learned about the diagnostic features as well of this assessment. That means that, so if a student, tell me if I get this right, the same student could take the same question and three kids could answer it differently, all wrong, but the computer would help diagnose why each of them answered it in a different way. So it's actually giving more data to, like more accurate data to us. And so that is one of the, the benefits that we hope to learn from. We may not need to go beyond that blood pressure check for every single student. It'll just be in certain cases.
Just real quickly, and I, the essence of time, we've been, as an organization, studying lean practices and all the barriers, the waste of time in this. And as each time you look at the tabs here, that was work that teachers had to do. They had to organize the groups, they had input the data, they had to do that. That's all wasted time where they could be planning activities that they could be working with kids. And so not only do we think we're going to capture some time in actually administration, but we believe that we're going to capture a lot of teacher time back to what their passion is, is working with kids and spending less time collecting data, organizing data, and just having that at your fingertips. So those analytics will be extremely helpful.
So another, another features for this one is that from our student information system, we upload all the student demographic data, Title One, Lab, Special Ed, ELL. So in our teacher report, not only regular classroom teachers, also the Special Ed program. So we are looking, making sure, okay, this is my, our third grade Special Ed program student performance, and this is the progress they have made. So it provide a lot of flexibility when we disaggregate data, data from different perspective and different filtering process that we would like to know more. So that is what the paper and pencil, the bubble sheet cannot, never tell us in that detail.
Thank you. I, I don't have any, any questions, but I do have some comments. This is a piece that's been missing for quite a while. And I spent 10 years out, I got stuck helping with walk-ins, I hate to say that. But I mean, that was, that was the first time it was done too. And it, but that, and those are, are time-consuming, the data entry, I've done that. Does take away a lot of your classroom time. If you can get instant results and the, I think the other thing I like about this is that I know it's aligned with Reading Street and our springboard curriculum. It supplements and helps us with that and the scores and the, I just think, you know, we're going to be leading edge again. What, one comment I do have about the company, I, I think it's an advantage that we are with a new company. Because they're going to be more leading edge than one that's been around for a long time, like tweaks. And I think that's an exciting part, and we may get to be a part of where they grow and how they grow. So I just want to say thank you for all the hard work, and it's not over, we know that. It's just kind of beginning as we get into this field testing. Hopefully you'll come back and tell us what you find.
We'd love to, we'd love to. And perhaps even bring a couple teachers who are doing the field testing to share with you. At one point, we'd even love to be able to put, give you opportunity to log in and, and, you know, see what it looks like from a student perspective. So those are all the things we're hoping for down the road.
Don't assess us, we might not do that so well. Just real quickly, clarifying question. The company that is a new, is new, but can you give a little history of where they came from and the work that they did? Because I don't want folks to, to think that we're just taking a risk, and this is a really important factor.
Curriculum Associates is actually the company, and they have been around for 20 years. They have produced many, many, many different teacher resources and tools that we've even used in our district. And they're a very well-known and a very reliable and reputable company. They've had their own assessment tools that they've used. And instead of revamping it and refreshing it, they've redesigned it. And so in redesigning, they've called it iReady. And it is a different tool. And that's one of the frustrations, and I think Superintendent Santorno mentioned this a couple board meetings ago, that I so appreciate her outlook on this, is that so many of our publishers in our company tout that they have redesigned their tools for the new standards, when in fact, they've just, they've just refreshed them or realigned them. They haven't redesigned them.
Thank you, that was the point I really was trying to make. That we're with an innovative company that is not just retooling and tweaking this and that, that are actually realizing what education in the 21st century looks like. Superintendent?
I, I wish Director Ushka was here so that she could hear the time that you took to get teachers at the table. And I think that that is an incredible piece. So that when, you know, we look at, you know, when we're into the pilot and implementing, we'll have teachers that can sell it to each other. And maybe sell it isn't the word, but market it to each other because they're the ones that, you know, that made the decision. So thank you for taking that time. It's not easy. It's a lot faster just to sit down, look at it and say, yeah, this is great. But that you took the time to involve teachers is real important. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Look forward to seeing what you have to tell us.
Good job.
Yes, a lot of hard work and awesome. Okay, our next item is middle school boundaries. Mr. Merkani?
So as the team's setting up, just a couple of quick reminders. So what the team has done, and this is part of the, the initial, we just completed our elementary boundary revisions. And so what we, we started with is a similar process. We're here to give you a, a, some data of the current status quo of where we are and the process that we plan on taking to address the data. And what we'll be looking for from you is your guidance. Is this the right process to take? And we won't be making any decisions tonight, other than if you tell us, pardon me? Guidance, thank you. If you tell us we're going in the wrong direction, this is the time to do it. And if you think this is the right direction to have these conversations, then we would then go through our process that we did last time for elementary, engaging a technical team that then would be developing a straw design that would be then taken out to the community and a larger community team that would also engage a large community-wide feedback loop. And then ultimately brought back to you and the superintendent. So with that, I think I've killed enough time to let the Chief Financial Officer take it away.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Josh, or Dr. Garcia, excuse me. So what we're hoping for is somewhat of a conversive interaction. Steve and I will tag team on different slides and just share with you the data that we've collected around middle school boundaries, outline some of our suggested processes and offer you an opportunity to interject with any data requests, information requests or questions that you have. It's the right presentation. Yeah. I apologize. And I think, you know, just to give a brief outline, Josh did a great, sorry, Dr. Garcia did a great job.
That's what we always say.
We intend to outline for you some of the enrollment forecasting and modeling that we have done. We want to talk to you a little bit about Hunt Boundaries, and what the impact is if we bring Hunt back in the former capacity that it was in the district. We would like to just define some recommendations for boundary reviews, talk about Hunt a little bit, and do the questions. Okay, we're moving on.
Yeah, and so just clarification, that when we talk about Hunt, we're, we're not talking about if Hunt. We're talking about bringing it back to. Yes, and so the clarity around Hunt is, is we've, we've promised that to the, the, part of our bond. So our team, when we talk about that, is you will provide us guidance on the scope of Hunt. That's what we're talking about.
It absolutely plays an impact on how we boundary for the middle school group.
Also plays an impact on potential bonds too, on the line.
So if we looked at the enrollment forecast methodology that was employed to come up with these, and I, I'm sorry. I'm missing half of my data on the slide. There it is. So we employed the, we employed two demographers actually. We have Les Kendrick, who is our district demographer, and he helps us with financial projection data for demographics for students as well as demographics for individual schools so that we can develop staffing around them. Those data sets were incorporated with GIS flow analytics. We hired Tyler Vick to help us out in defining long-term enrollment forecasts. And he used a great set of data here to develop geographic adjustments to enrollment projections over the next 10 years. Some of those drivers on the age cohorts, he looked at birth and aging, existing enrollment trends for each cohort. He looked at both our district data as well as Office of Financial Management data, US Census, Census blocks, as well as proprietary data.
Right, and basically he was able to, I think we saw a presentation earlier in the year about what his GIS output was. And so that pipelines all of that data into a physical map that we can manipulate. And the beauty of it is the depth that we can drive our eSchool Plus information, our student data systems in, across all of our different departments in the district. But this basically was a great opportunity to challenge and look and vet Les Kendrick's numbers so that we can see where different projections got us. And I think the next slide shows us some great accuracy. A lot of this, I kind of, you know, to the, to the untrained eye, this is a little crystal ball-ish, looking at census data, looking at birth rates, look at population growth, look at, looking at how many permits for development are in.
Migration patterns.
Yes. And so this is encouraging to see that two independent groups forecasting our enrollment trends are really close without you actually using their, each other's data. This is encouraging to look at that we're using sound data moving forward for our planning.
I think that it's also important for us to lay out that if we look back at our demographer Les Kendrick's numbers over the last nine years, his accuracy percentage district-wide is a 0.3% error rate. Some years are a little better than others, but collectively over a nine-year period, it's almost perfect. So in comparison to that and taking that into consideration when we're looking at the flow analytics consultants demographics, we feel pretty strong, pretty strongly that we've made some accurate predictions. Where I would say that the demographer has some struggles is when we look at individual schools. And, and you hear that from time to time, you know, individually, he's not targeting exact, because he's also not bringing in a lot of the data that the GIS consultant is bringing in on migration patterns and building permit use. So what you see here are color blocks that represent the current boundaries of schools and the growth in the number of students by 2020. And then there's a percentage, which is very small to see, although it's also very small to see over there as well. It is on the computer in front of you. The percentages represent the total enrollment as a percentage of the recommended program capacity for each school.
So recommended program capacity, there's a lot of different factors that can drive a capacity number for schools. If you talk to the city of Tacoma or our permitting agencies, they have an idea based on code. If you talk to our teachers association, they have an idea based on the collective bargaining agreement. And so when we look at how many students a school can hold, we use a rough number of 25. It's a good balance of code, it's a good balance of our, our averaging of our collective bargaining agreements. And so these numbers, the RPC, basically the recommended program capacity, is our number of teaching stations times 25 students, which would be our ideal number, to get a rough idea of a capacity of a facility.
So this map is looking, I'm not, I'm sorry. This map is actually looking five years into the future. And what this is telling us is those, those red schools, which is also the middle graph over here, those red schools in the middle are going to see growth that puts them beyond the recommended program capacity for those buildings. And you see that in the east and then in central Tacoma area. And what you see in Mason is that they're actually going to lose students as compared to their current enrollment. And that will provide them with just enough students to meet their capacity. So while it shows as blue and they're losing students, it would actually just bring them down to a normal number of students for the recommended program capacity of their building.
Even one thing, when you look at that, you see that there's not a lot of wiggle room. So even at Truman is, as it comes down in five years, it'll be at 100% capacity. And so that's one of the things that the team looks at when you talk about middle school boundaries is, there's a middle school population, and yes, some schools have 80%, but nobody's down into the 50, 60%. This is, they'll all be, and which is great for us in our enrollment, but they're all going to be full.
So if we go ahead and go to the next slide, please. When we're starting to look 10 years into the future, which is the graph over on the left-hand side up here, you'll see that from now till 2025, we'll see growth in most areas. It'll slow a little, but Jason Lee will become a very big hotspot for growth. And our recommended program capacity remains high at those same schools five years from now, 10 years from now. So it, it says to us, really what it means to us is that, you know, looking out into the future, we need to make an adjustment somehow, some way, and do some sort of revisions to the middle school groups. the middle school groups. I'm sorry, one more slide. So looking at the current recommended program capacity of the housing that we have for middle school students right now, district capacity would be at 6,825 students. Right now, we're at 90%. By 2020, we'll be at 98%, and then they'll hold until 2025. These numbers include Wainwright, they don't include Hunt. And we did find, as we had conversations around different buildings and their recommended program capacity, that we may be able to adjust some of our program capacities up based on some information and some evaluations that we've done recently. So there could be a little bit of flexibility in that number, but essentially, we're looking at it saying, we probably don't have enough space to house the students that we plan to have in the next 10 years. And we do need some level of increase.
Agreed.
If we look at these, that same slide but spread out across, across the nine comprehensive middle schools and Wainwright, you see where we have some flexibility and then, or some, you know, some capacity in where we have over enrollment. And this is again at 2020, I'm sorry, 2020 and 2025. So you see the different bars for each of us.
The bars represent the capacity of the school?
That's correct.
So the bar is, the bar represents the capacity, the horizontal bar represents the capacity, the vertical bars are the projected and current enrollments.
Right. And essentially, when we look at this, we see that we need to balance enrollment across the schools, and we need to do a little bit of adjusting. And I don't know when our last middle school boundary revision was. I'm not really sure.
Yeah, it was when we did First Creek.
First Creek.
McAvoy.
So the McAvoy, McAvoy-Galt, okay. When we bring Hunt into the conversation, which we have to, we put up here three scenarios of what Hunt could look like based on enrollment size. And when we looked at Hunt, that's the slide on the left, I'm sorry, on the right, up above you. When we looked at Hunt at 750 students, we really realized that it seems to be that we would build in a little too much capacity. 88%, it's, I mean, it's not the sweet spot. 90 to 92% is really more of a sweet spot, and I think that if Steve and I were making a recommendation, we would probably say that somewhere between 400 and 600 students is the right amount.
Right, I mean, if you look at the 750 model of a full-size comprehensive middle school, 10% capacity is one full middle school vacant. And so that's, that's maybe too much flexibility. If you think we have, we have currently nine middle schools, adding that 10th, that means that one high school, or added middle school represents 10% of our capacity. At 750, we're below 90% open.
And those.
So, I was just going to say, that tends to focus us to look at what is the ideal Hunt enrollment, and there's options.
And that's, that size between 400 and 600 allows you to offer a comprehensive programming in a middle school environment. So you don't have to make any decisions on the curriculum or anything, guidance at this point, but the size allows flexibilities for the kids that are going there.
And I'm assuming that the 90%, under the, the 90% and the 93% in the last two scenarios would still protect us, say, another 10 years out with the number, you know, if that middle school number grew, then with, with these numbers and the numbers of our other eight, we would have, we would have enough capacity to house a middle school. What we don't want to end up is having to build another one, you know, in the next 10 years, right? If we don't have to, anyway. I mean, we don't care if we get an influx of thousands of kids, but based on the ones that we have.
Well, you know, if you look at the 600 to 400 too, that's a good size, I think, for a middle school. I think some of our middle schools personally are too large, given the issues with the kids, that transition, and looking at maybe if we do redo our middle schools, looking at smaller ones in terms of, sometimes less is not, you know, a big school at the middle school level isn't the greatest. And I think this gives us an opportunity, I think we're going to have some kids come from university place, quite frankly. And I'm just saying that because I know that on that boundary line there, one parent told me not too long ago that lives or in UP looking for a house in our neighborhood, I want to move my kids to Tacoma schools. And is Hunt going to reopen as a comprehensive middle school? I said, as far as I know, absolutely yes, because that's that missing piece in the academics in that neighborhood, and that's what we've told, I don't know how many times we've told the neighborhood, yes, we will have a comprehensive. I would ask us as a board to pass something that clearly states that again, because there's an awful lot of concern and unrest as to whether or not that's going to happen. And we need to put that to rest.
So I think the other thing we need to think of is just programmatically, if you're talking comprehensive middle school, 400 gets a little low to provide a comprehensive program. So, you know, you're balancing the number of students and the program, because, you know, when we closed Hunt, it was three-something, and we were subsidizing it to a big amount just to get enough, you know, to get enough teachers in there to run a comprehensive middle school. So I think that, in my opinion, the closer we are to 600, the better we're going to be able to run, you know, a comprehensive program. You go toward 400, and you're not able to, you know, to offer as many electives and things like that, because you don't have enough teachers to do it.
It is a delicate balance. I mean, you always hear if you build it, they will come, but we really don't know that. I mean, we want them to, but, you know, so we want to run that fine line of making sure that we don't build something that doesn't house all the, that houses everything that we have, but allows some capacity for growth, but doesn't allow so much capacity that we've got wasted space to.
I don't think anybody's asking for that. I think what people over there are asking is to have a middle school option, comprehensive so that kids, and we look at Truman and Mason, and you look at some of these boundaries, I would like to see what the original Hunt boundaries were.
Um, yes.
And overlaid on where we, where we are now vis-à-vis.
Amazingly, it's essentially our next slide. You don't see the actual physical boundaries.
I'd like to see the physical boundaries superposed on that map again.
Before we leave the topic of 400, 600, 750, our district has been in the practice of looking at capacity of facilities in the past, like Jefferson. Jefferson was designed with a core of capacity of 550, but executed at time of construction for a 350 population, knowing that we could add eight classrooms on in the future that were master planned in so that we could bump that population up to 200, by 200 in the future. Geiger was designed with a 350 in mind, but the decision was made right at bedtime to go to the full 550 model. So that's another option we can be looking at for Hunt, to cost protect future options, is to look at what's the capacity we need to start with, but what's the core for a futureer?
And we certainly have enough room to do that.
Yeah, the Hunt site is a fantastic site for that kind of exploration.
You know, we did that at Meeker.
Right.
And we added a whole, another wing a few years later when we had the population there.
You may have to do that as other areas surrounding us grow out over there.
Correct.
So tonight's really about that, that process, and, you know, what does, I think you can see that there's a need, right? So for those that are sitting at home who ever thought, we don't need another middle school, yeah, we do. And you can see that there's a need that, for the population, that you're going to have to provide some guidance on to say, yeah, we want that, we want that core capacity and that magic number based on our superintendent, we think, you know, right around 600? Because that, the team is going to have to take to say, so what does the population, what does the map look like to support potentially 600? Or if you're comfortable saying, hey, we're going to open the doors at 450, but build it for 600? Those things have to be decided fairly soon so that the team can start to do the technical designs, the straw designs, that would ultimately influence the other boundaries. So here's the next slide, and this takes us to that overlay.
So what we see on this slide, on the top box are the current boundaries in 2020, in 2025 and 2015. And then on the bottom box, you see, if we bring back Hunt with the boundaries that they had originally, you would see where the enrollments would be in each school. What I would like to point out are the red numbers. And so if we use the current scenario, we're going to see, and we do no adjustments, we're going to see that First Creek, Jason Lee, Mason, and Truman are all over the recommended program capacities, and we're going to be struggling in those schools. And then we're going to see other schools like Stewart and Baker and Gray in the 80%. So, you know, there's an, there's an inequity around that. It obvious, it's very obvious from the data that we need to do something to make an adjustment. And even if we added Hunt with the current boundaries, or at least with the boundaries that it had when it closed, you'll see that we still have issues at First Creek and Jason Lee, and that we're going to need to make adjustments to. And then you're also going to have Hunt with the boundaries, if we just re-implemented with the boundaries that were there, would only come out at 64% of the recommended program capacity. That's at a 750-student school, so.
So the combination of defining that Hunt and doing some re-boundaries is what we ultimately will have to do.
That's perfect.
So that, that brings us to the recommendation that we would like to make to you is to allow us the opportunity to evaluate the recommended program capacity, see if there's any adjustments or changes that need to be made there. Perhaps there aren't, but perhaps there are. We would like to review all middle school boundaries. I'm not saying that we want to make adjustments to every one of them. There are some that are probably okay when we look at the long-term picture, but in the near term, we probably have some schools that need adjusting. We've provided you in a Friday report, a process that we've outlined, that we've used in previous boundary adjustments, that we would like you to, you know, give us some guidance on. And then we provided you with some potential values or guiding principles in the form of the compact or contra, what did we call it last time?
It was either a charter.
Charter, or, you know, something like, yeah.
Don't use that word.
Whatever we call it, I just don't remember, I'm sorry. Whatever we called it when we did the initial boundary adjustments with the elementary group.
Thank you.
So.
Charge?
The charge, the committee charge.
Charge to the committee, thank you.
Great job, Shannon.
Thank you, Sharon.
And, and we would like even the opportunity to consider a phased-in implementation. We want to talk about what it is that we need to do to target the areas of need now, and then what is it going to look like when we bring Hunt online with whatever that building looks like? So those are the recommendations that we would like to have you hear from us.
So what you want from the board at this study session is some informa, I mean.
We can't do any action.
No action.
Correct.
But what you want to hear is what their disposition is around the recommendations. And then at our next board meeting, we will have them take action on rec, on taking, taking action on approving the recommendations for the process, correct or incorrect? You can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm fine with that. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
I mean, if you need, if you need additional time to come up with the, you know, the actual action item for the board, we can, we can also do that. I just want them to know that tonight, we just want to hear their disposition about the recommendations.
Correct.
Absolutely. And we have, I think, just two more slides, and then we can get right into it. Our additional considerations that we'll need to have a conversation about is, Hunt is planned to open fall of 2021 based on the bond that we approved back in 2013.
The original construction schedule, right.
Right. And, you know, we want to consider that comprehensive middle school option. We need to really get some ideas around what the size looks like and what that needs to entail. The decision point for Hunt, from our perspective, needs to happen around June of this year, which I know is rather soon. And we would really like some feedback from you on what decisions you're going to need to make, or, sorry, what documents and information you're going to need to make a decision by June.
And in that, we're talking about the size, the scope of things. You have time, you know, to, and we recommend, we're not talking about curriculum decisions and program decisions, because once that boundary committee has made their recommendations and you figure out who's going to that school, then there's a chance, just similar to what we did with Wainwright and Whittier, is engage a broader audience and what does the curriculum and the program specific look like? So June deadline is really that size range that we'll need information for.
And on this last slide, we have just a draft timeline of what the implementation would look, or what the, you know, what our needs are. You'll see that we've talked to you about the board approval process and what it's going to look like for a boundary process. We're going to need some direction at this meeting, that's the intent of this meeting. I can't read from this far. Everything I have is too small to read, I'm so sorry. The spring board team will start to meet, will do technical working sessions starting in April, and that'll carry on through June. The expectation on that is that the technical team internally looks at the data and develops a straw man proposal to bring to the charge and the committee, and to identify, you know, what are the starting points for that group so that they don't have to spend too much time wrestling around the data and that we've cleaned the data to a point where we're ready to disseminate it with them. We would like a Hunt decision on size so that we know how to incorporate that into the boundary process sometime around June. And then we would like to start working with the public committee in August, with the expectation that we would be complete and have our board approval and superintendent's recommendation by November, December.
Okay.
Which is a little earlier than what we did this year, so that we can bump up for optional enrollment processing and Stewart opening, because Stewart is likely to have an adjustment.
So that's a thing we haven't really talked about, is Stewart is a driving factor in the timeline with the opening of Stewart. We need to make sure the boundaries are ready, and then that optional enrollment and choice process. So that's why that timeline is just somewhat tight.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
I don't know, we're done.
Good job.
So in the past, so I'm all for, you know, scale back, do a core for 750 for Hunt, and then do, have a design where you can add a wing and maybe 400, 500 students at the beginning. So I'm fine with that. I don't know that I'll change my mind on that. But in the past, when you say that, we had a presentation quite a few years ago, and Joe Wilhoff was here, and there are very few lots really left to develop in Tacoma. So unless your demographer is looking really at the turnover of the neighborhoods, which is perhaps what is predating his research on, you know, it'd be kind of surprising if we fill up these schools to overflowing. But in the past, we've had open enrollment, and Hunt, a lot of Hunt students have come from the Hilltop, because the buses go down 12th and they go down Sixth Avenue. And if we continue to open enrollment, you know, I think that we will still have a sizable number when we open a new school. So, you know, that, that could fill that, help to fill that school up. But another question I would have at this point, and it's a little early, and, is like, what is the impact of Wainwright going to be in that neighborhood? And so to make the decision on Hunt right now is a little tough, I think, when we don't know how many are going to want that option.
So just, when you look at the data, and if we could scroll back to the capacity size, the recommended program, a couple, one more, keep going, stop. Oh, one back, one forward, there you go. And it's hard for me to see the numbers, but you see with Wainwright, it's the very bottom one, and I apologize.
It's pretty small.
Right here.
Yeah.
And so if you include Hunt in the 750 range, I think these numbers are based on, you still have Wainwright, which is one of the things, based on the current boundaries and where, that would be at 107% capacity, which is another reason why we need Hunt, because we can't open a building and then have it already be full and then not really have that be a unique option for folks. And so the opportunity for Hunt can also draw some of that population down.
I would just point out too, because it's, I thought, I thought when I was looking at that, 107%, oh my. But really, the building capacity is at 225, and so we're projecting 241. It's 16 students over, which, you know, in a small school like that, just shows a lot higher than it is, not to diminish what you were saying, sorry.
Absolutely. But it gets to, I think Director Winskill's point of, you know, do we have some data that helps us see what the projections are, using the flow analytics based on the students that have been signed up, based on the students in the neighborhood? Wainwright will be at its recommended capacity in 2025.
And we're not going to let it get any bigger. I mean, it's got a capacity on it.
Yeah, and that's way off, though, that's a ways off, 2025. And so the, what, when I, the committee looks at all the other middle schools, and I know that Stewart is going to fill up as soon as they remodel, because that's happened to every single brand-new school we've had. I like the idea of grandfathering people in to the school so they don't have to move if they don't want to, but encouraging as many, like First Creek is so full, you know, encouraging people but not saying you can't go here, because I think that's really tough. And then honoring families to stay in our buildings. So that, those would be the two issues that I would like for that committee, that I can think of right now.
Thank you.
Director, call.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments, I guess. One, my question was about some of what we've already been talking about. You said, we like to think if you build it, they'll come, but we don't know, like, and Director Winskill just said that every time we finish a building, it fills up. But what is the, I just want to know what that history has been of, like, does a new school draw folks from outside of the catchment, or does it draw people back in who were outside before? Or do programmatic additions in places with new schools draw more? Like, what's that impact? Just in terms of thinking about your recommendations, I like the idea of looking at all of the boundaries. I like the idea of looking at all of the boundaries, um, that was one of your line items, I like that idea of looking at them all at the same time. But I guess I'm looking at that Jason Lee, Stewart, and First Creek group, and all of them having issues. I would like us, I don't know if it's possible, but to think about, in this, I wonder how far kids will end up having to travel if we redo the boundaries, and kids are on the cusp of one and end up having to go to Baker, but it increases their ride, bus ride time. I'd like us to think about transportation time in the re, um, districting. But with that too, especially with Jason Lee already being at capacity, I just wonder if there are some ways beyond, in addition to the boundary changes of building capacity in facilities nearby. I'm thinking in particular of the East Side Community Center, and whether or not we can have, like, with, with, whether or not we can have any dedicated space there that increases the capacity of the school longer term. Um, I don't know if that's a sustainable option, or just how, but given the other things that we wanna consider, like transportation time and, um, what's going on at schools nearby, are there other ways to increase capacity that makes sense for programming that are outside of the school?
And actually, I think that, that this in the elementary boundaries, th- those are all considerations that are at the table. So we bring Sandra to the table, we bring our transportation manager Sue to the table, and so those are all things that we look at. So Sandra can tell us kinda what the patterns are, when, how people are moving in and out, and what the predicted change will be. And Susan is, Sue is racist, definitely there to talk about what the bus rides is gonna look like. So that makes total sense.
Thank you.
Director Heinz.
Yeah, with respect to information, we'd like, uh, to consider the sizing of Hunt. The Superintendent Santorino noted that offerings will change depending upon size. So I'd be interested to see a stratification at the four hundred, six hundred, seven fifty, to get an idea of what, what's available. Yes, what programming's available at the seven hundred and fifty level, six hundred and four hundred, so we could make some choices around size and, and offerings for kids and families.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, one of the comments you brought up, transportation, I think that's been a major issue with the closing of Hunt. We have a lot of kids going to Mason and Truman, I see them every morning on Twelfth, and that's a long bus ride. By the time they, that's at seven in the morning, they're out there on the corner. And by the time they, I think that's where maybe the demographer hasn't looked at some of those kids that have gone over to U P because of that, because University Place Middle School is closer than Truman or Mason. And, um, and I think there are some unknown, there are some factors in there that, that cannot, that haven't really been, I think, looked at as a number of, of T P S kids that are enrolled in University Place from that west side of Tacoma. And I think that is, um, a factor, 'cause I know there's a whole bunch of them. Uh, and, and Furcrest, so if you take in the Furcrest, that whole west side, and actually take a look at the kids that are T P S kids that have transferred, yeah, out to, and I know that was brought up when we started talking about the bond issue among Furcrest, particularly Furcrest people who said, you know, we're gonna go to U P because we don't have comprehensive middle school anymore.
So, so we'll be able to do that with the flow analytics and be, we can, Sandra helped us last time identify with waivers, kids that could potentially are in that area through census. It may not be perfect, but we'll get a, a feeling of it.
Okay.
There.
Good, because I, but what I would like to see us do is really take a look at all of these, um, these schools, 'cause some of them are too large, obviously. And I think one of the things that, uh, that Director Winskill pointed out is when Hunt was open, we had a lot of kids who did come from the Jason Lee area and liked the program offerings and the size of the campus and things like that. So, the building it, when, I think Geiger's a great example of build it and they will come. That school was, uh, down right around two hundred enrollment, the day it opened, what, were we at three eighty or some darn thing?
I was gonna say, we went from one seventy-six to about three fifty.
Yeah, the day that it opened, so, and you, you roll out a new comprehensive, even a little bit smaller middle school, like Debbie's been around, and she knows, and, and I say, I think you'll see some of those Jason Lee kids whose siblings or someone who may have gone to Hunt, 'cause there were a number of those kids. That's not a long bus ride if you're right down Twelfth Street to, so I, I think there's a lot of factors there, but I would like to see what Director Heinz said, looking at what that looks like. 'Cause every time I hear some, but, talk to someone in that area, and I lived there and have for forty-seven years, is that, uh, are we gonna get a middle school back? And I think, um, we need to really con- strongly consider how to, how to make that work.
And respectfully, I offer this, one of the reasons why I came to Tacoma was because of the fact that you guys had established the Sammies, the sodas, the innovative solutions, and so I wanted to be a part of that. Um, I would, I know, I've heard the conversation about comprehensive middle, and I understand the needs, but I would ask too, that we look at, what is our portfolio of offerings, and what are we offering at the middle school that could maybe potentially be a part of Hunt's future?
Well, we've got Wainwright.
Right?
There, and that's been that-
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to mitigate any of that.
I'm just saying, I think that-
The importance of Wainwright is huge.
It is, and, and I did have, the day we broke ground, several people, including one of the supportive, uh, Furcrest City Council people come over and asked me, does this mean we're not gonna rebuild Hunt? And I said, no, it does not.
Yeah.
So, there's that very strong feeling, um, many of them had their kids go there and, and so on, as one of mine did. So I think there's a big s- support factor over there for that, we have to figure out how we can-
Agreed.
Help make that work.
We have comprehensive middle schools that have an innovative circle.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not, don't, don't-
Well, and Hunt actually was an I B school when it was closed.
Yeah.
And I think probably need to look at that again, vis-à-vis, that was the feeder school for, for Foss, so.
So for any of those that are watching at home, I think you can see by the data, we are very much recommending that we, it's not an if of Hunt, that the Hunt is on the table, what we're asking the board to consider, and by June is, is providing some guidance on how large the recommended program should be. And we will bring you some, uh, some data back, maybe not specific around which, uh, programs, but the number of programs based on size, because that would left up to the school community. And we've heard from you that the general consensus is, uh, that you are willing, uh, consensus, not a decision-making consensus, but by your comments, is it safe to say that, um, yes, you're, you're comfortable looking at, at the entire district with our middle school boundaries?
Absolutely.
We would be finalizing that, including things like transportation distance is really a critical element that we should consider, and try to minimize that transportation for students. We'll be finalizing that in a charge that we would be bringing back to you hopefully as early as next week, but maybe not. And, um, and we would, uh, ask your, at that time, to make a decision on the charge, so that the team could then launch into the work.
Okay. Good, thank you, good presentation, and we look forward to moving, moving ahead and making these, getting these decisions and boundaries, so that we don't have disparity in, in the sizes across the district.
It's great, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Good, we can go home, and Scott can go watch basketball.
That's right.
My Badgers play tomorrow.
Thank you.